Good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's Town Hall Meeting here in the Great Hall. My name is Adam Spencer, it's a pleasure to be your emcee for this evening. I quite like the warm round of applause I got when I walked on the stage as well. Thank you very much for that. I acknowledge the Chancellor, Lynne Hutchinson, the Vice-Chancellor Michael Spence, and everyone here today, including our 26, count them, 26 speakers we'll be hearing from, canvassing a full range of opinions on the subject being discussed tonight. I also welcome anyone who's over at GLT, where the ceremony today, the proceedings are being streamed. Lovely little lecture there at GLT. If things get a little bit slow there, you can read some of the graffiti I scored on the tables in my first year maths lectures a few years ago. But, to welcome us all here tonight on behalf of the traditional owners of the land, can we please have a warm welcome for Professor Shane Hughes and the Day V C of Indigenous Strategy and Services at the University?
Thank you family. It is my honour to offer an acknowledgement of country. And this is something that we do not because it's part of the order of proceedings, but it has been part of Aboriginal life for tens of thousands of years. Walking onto country, you seek permission, you seek to acknowledge the spiritual connection of traditional owners with their country. And traditional owners respond with a welcome to country. Tonight is fairly significant because it comes so close to an anniversary that is important to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and to the relationship between Aboriginal and non-Arbostral Australians. On the 23rd of August 1966, Vincent Lindari led the walk-off of 250 people from the Wadehill Station. That's 49 years ago, almost to the day. On the 16th of August 1975, Goth Whitlam poured a handful of sand into his hand and said, "This is proof that the title and ownership and connection of Wurundjeri people to their country is forever protected." So we can see throughout our history, dating back tens of thousands of years, Aboriginal peoples' connection to their land and the importance it plays, and the invitation to all Australians to be part of the spiritual connection to our land. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners of this land, the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, and acknowledge their continuing struggle and their continuing efforts to protect their connections and their invitations to us all, to be part of an Australia that looks after the spirit of our country. Thank you.
Thank you very much Shane, and also to pay my respects to the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation. I live just in Newtown on Gadigal land and I'm proud to say that I do and pay my respects to all that's past and present and any First Australians present this evening. Now to welcome us on behalf of the university, please a round of applause for the Chancellor, Lynne Hutchinson.
Thank you Adam, and thank you very much Shane for that warm welcome to country, much appreciated. On behalf of the university and its senate, it is my great pleasure to welcome you all here this evening. Tonight is an opportunity for our community to come together to focus on the critical importance of higher education and research to this nation. It is important in terms of its social, economic, and political growth and development. We are all here because we are deeply committed to the University of Sydney and its role in providing high quality education and research. We are here to talk about how we can achieve this given the continuing funding issues faced by our university and other universities around Australia. There is no doubt that the change in government policy, which eliminated the cap on university undergraduate places, was a very good thing for Australia. This change enabled many more young people to enter higher education and led to a rapid expansion in the number of students at universities. The challenge for our university, which we share with other Australian universities, is that this policy change was followed by a real reduction in funding for the sector. $3.2 billion of cuts were made to higher education and research and were announced in 2012 and 2013. And now the sector is facing another $2.6 billion of cuts for a total of $5.8 billion. These funding cuts are even more challenging for our university because of our commitment to sustaining world-class research, not the least as providing the best context for the education of Australia's most able students. To some extent, we have been able to defray some of the reduction in government funding by an increase in the number of international fee-paying students. These students bring to our university talent and diversity and a global engagement. They also help to defray some of those costs. However, there is a limit to the funding that can be earned from international students, reflecting the size of the market and competitive forces. So we are left with a funding challenge as we strive to increase, not decrease, funding for our university. We must remain financially viable if we are to retain our position as one of Australia's and one of the world's great universities. A slight mediocrity induced by an inability to invest in first-rate research and teaching for our staff and students is not an option. So how do we balance the financial contribution from international students, from Australian taxpayers, and from domestic students? This is a key subject for discussion this evening. Your senate is deeply concerned about the consequences if the funding issues facing our university are not satisfactorily resolved. As our Vice-Chancellor has stated publicly, we are particularly concerned about equity and access. We are determined that we remain true to our traditions and the credo upon which this great university was founded. Our founder, Charles Wentworth, said, "As a state university, we must provide the opportunity for the child of every class to become great and useful in the destinies of his country." Our inheritance of a great social good is now at stake. We must ensure this principle is upheld. An important aspect of equity and access relates to women. It is a great achievement that women now make up 56% of the graduates of our university. The problem for women graduates is that Australia still has a gender equity pay gap of 17%. That is, women on average earn 17% less than men for doing the same job. As a result, we face greater problems than men in repaying the cost of our education. The reasons for this pay gap are complex, but a key reason is that in the majority of families, women still are the primary caregivers for children and give their time out of their career to do so. They suffer career and financial disadvantage in doing so. Women are also financially disadvantaged because they choose professions such as teaching and nursing. These callings are so important to all of us, but they pay less than many other professions. One of the equity and access issues I would like to see addressed is special measures to help women who are disadvantaged by their lower earning capacities in repaying their cost of education. This evening is a very important opportunity for you as members of our university community to have your say about the challenges we are facing as we work to build a stronger and fairer university. It is also about listening to the views of each other. I am very much looking forward to hearing from each of our speakers. Let me assure you that your views will be taken into account as the university formulates its response to the opportunities and challenges we face. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much Chancellor. We'll hear in just a moment from the first of our 26 speakers, but first of all, to set the parameters for the evening, a round of applause please for the Vice-Chancellor, Professor Michael Spence.
So thanks very much. My job for this evening is really just to set a bit of context and to give you some information that you may not actually have, and also to raise some of the questions that I think are crucial and that we're going to need to be addressing over the next little while. Have I got a PowerPoint presentation? Yes, there you go. Okay, sorry, hang on. There we go. So, this is the proposition we're here to talk about this evening. It looks like a proposition designed by a committee, because it was a proposition designed by a committee, by the senate, and in fact amended by the committee, but it says some important things. It talks first of all about our contribution to Australia's flourishing. It's really important to remember that the nature of our contribution is in teaching and research. And the reason that that's important is because we have a deep commitment at the university to high-quality teaching and high-quality research and keeping them together. To the notion, not just that students should be exposed to the latest research findings, but that what our students do and what our researchers do in finding out, in making inquiry about the world, in looking for evidence, in formulating questions, it's the same thing. The reason that that's important is that not all Australian universities do research of the quantity or quality that we do. About 75% of the research of Australian universities is done just by eight of the 39 universities. And that's important for a reason we'll come back to in a minute. But both our teaching and research has to be high quality and our education has to be available to everybody. That is a deep part of the DNA of this institution. Quality, Sederem, Menze, Ardun, Matarato. We can do it as well here as anywhere in the rest of the world. Access, as the Chancellor said, from the beginning, this was a university that was to be open to all. So what does quality look like? Well, first of all, quality involves having high-quality teachers and researchers. The difficulty there is that with an aging academic workforce, competition for the very best internationally is becoming stiffer. They have to be working in high-quality conditions. And there's been a huge amount of pressure on the conditions for education in Australian universities over the past 20 years. In 1990, staff-student ratio in arts and sciences at this university was 12 to 1. It's now 22 to 1, on average, and obviously in places much worse. The third is that it has to have- What does access look like? Obviously, a diversity of students. That's a challenge for the university. We've been putting a lot of effort in. We are just 400 students from low SES backgrounds, improved than we were four years ago. That for me is something that we need to do a lot more work on. They need to be well-supported in their education. Both academically, retention rates for low SES students at Australian universities are not great. At this university, they're very good. But also financially, one of the biggest impediments to a quality education at the moment is the level of youth allowances. And therefore, and the fact that no Australian university has a decent world-class bursary system, this one included. And they need to have a breadth of potential career choices so they can't be crippled by debt when they finish. So how does it all work at the moment financially and what are the core questions? Well, at the moment, there are both things upon which we lose money and things where we make up for the losses. Things on which we lose money are primarily research. Research is incredibly expensive, but not only expensive, in Australia, it is worse funded than almost anywhere in the world because we only get the direct and not the indirect costs of research. And therefore, research costs a lot, and some tuition. There are a number of, of subjects that the Lomax Smith review identified as significantly underfunded. At the university, we teach all of them. In medicine, for example, if you teach medicine the way that the Australian Medical Council requires, the minimum you can lose per student per year is $40,000. And we have about 300 to 350 medical students in every year. So, where do we make money? Where do we make up for those losses? We make a small amount of money in commercialisation, we work hard for philanthropy, and we make up for it essentially in other tuition. That's why class sizes in some parts of the university are so big. That's a real issue for quality going forward. So how does tuition work? We make up for some of our losses with our international student work, where international students pay about $319 million a year. Domestic for fee-paying students, I wonder if you're interested in information or just shouting? Domestic for fee students- Domestic for fee students currently pay about $109 million. And Commonwealth-supported places students pay about $508, of which 300 comes from the Commonwealth-
Vice-Chancellor, hold me for a second. Excuse me, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind, we are about to move on to 26 speakers that I can assure you, that I can assure you, that I can assure you represent a full range of views. From what, from what I can understand, I'm going to ask you once more. Why don't we have a vote? Can we have a vote? People who would like me to finish my brief remarks, can you now clap? People who'd like to listen to more shouting, can you clap? So Michael, just give me one second, Vice-Chancellor. The point I want to make, I'd like to make three points quickly. First of all, there are 26 speakers who are about to speak that I can assure- Please! Okay, I'll start with, I'll start with my second point. I'll start with my second point, which is either being given individual decision to shut this meeting down if at any stage the hectoring of anyone on any point of view gets to the point where speakers can't be heard. You, you are getting reasonably close to that, so I will ask you please. The point, the point I wish to make, yes, there are 400 people in the room who are interested in a large range of things, and if I ask them all individually, we will get nowhere. There are 26 speakers coming who represent a full breadth of views, including many I think are very strongly of the views that from what I understand you are putting forward. There are 80 speakers who were not invited. And we will make clear at the end of, we will make clear at the end of tonight's proceedings that there is an ongoing process from here during which I'm sure your opinion and the opinion of anyone else would be quite welcome to be submitted. Now, if you could be polite enough to give the speakers the chance to be heard and accept that in a room of 400 people with 250 stands shouting, I will have no choice but to shut this down and no one wants this, I'd ask you please. Please! There is a, there are a wide, there is a wide group of student representatives who will be heard. No, because I don't choose to answer your question, because you're not the speakers here. So please, desist, continue, Vice-Chancellor.
So. Commonwealth-supported places are about $508 million, of which $300 million is contributed by the government, 200 by students. There is a, so, the question is why are these issues important at the moment? Massive increase in numbers of students. 34% increase in numbers of Commonwealth-supported places between 2007 and 2012. Increasing costs of research. The nanotechnology building we've just built, $120 million to replace a building where people were doing world-class physics in 1930s facilities. But more importantly, the differing cost base of universities has become unsustainable because research-intensive universities lose that money on research but are funded on the same basis as everybody else. The system is unsustainable. So the questions that I think we really need to address, and what I hope is that in those 28, 76 speakers, we'll hear other questions as well, are how is the expansion of university education to be funded? And in particular, how is it to be funded in a way that enhances quality and access? How should university research be supported? And should it be supported at all from tuition fees? It is in every quality university in the world, but there's a question of the extent to which it should be supported from tuition fees. What should the balance be between private and public contributions to tuition? Given that we know that there already is a balance between private and public contributions? And who should decide that balance? Should it be individual institutions? Or should it be the Department of Education in Canberra? These are the really critical questions that the system is facing at the moment and that do have to be the subject of the national debate. But, what from my point of view is this evening about? This evening is not the extent of a process of consultation. This evening is a Town Hall Meeting in which we will have the opportunity to listen to 26 people speak. That is going to be followed by an extensive process involving online questionnaires, involving focus groups, involving search conferences, as we think through the issue of what we do in response to any changes that the government may bring. Of course, there's a lack of clarity at the moment about what they involve. The second is, I hope that this is a moment in time in which we can talk not just about the pine reforms, but about the broader question of the social importance of university and the questions of adequate funding for both research and education. One of the things I am glad about in this debate is that for the first time in a long time, those questions are being taken seriously by the Australian public in an environment where the last government slashed $3.2 billion out of higher education funding and nobody noticed. And this government is going to increase that to 5.84 and only now people are beginning to pay attention. So it's important that we as a university address this proposition at the general level and affirm our commitment to both quality and access in education and research. What I want to hear is a question, it is a conversation. Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice-Chancellor. We move now to our speakers this evening. When people register to attend this evening, I ask if they wish to speak. And the proposition, as explained by the Vice-Chancellor, has been set up for this evening. To ensure a range of comments across all aspects of the proposition are not much repetition, statements were made for consideration, over 100 submissions were made. 26 of those will be heard this evening. The statements and all other statements that were submitted will be taken into consideration as part of the university's ongoing consultation process. So the way it's going to work is each of tonight's speakers will be called to the lectern, they're invited to convey their point of view. They'll have three minutes in which to deliver their point. A very crucial role tonight is going to be played by the lovely Caroline. Give her a round of applause as she moves towards the stage because Caroline is in charge of the bell, on which there'll be just a gentle friendly tap at 2:30 and then quite a solid ding at 3 minutes. And we've, we've explained this to our speakers-
You speak, even if you've only got a couple of lines to go on your absolute fingers, you will be done at 3 minutes.
Thank you very much. To ensure a fair say for all, many of whom are not professional speakers or regularly used to speaking in environments like this, all speakers, regardless of their viewpoint, and not only of rupasiding, feel free to applaud loudly if someone supports you. But at the same time, please respect the right of speakers to promote an argument with which you may not entirely agree. At the end of those speakers, I'll explain the way forward. Thank you all of our speakers with a big round of applause. They're all very excited to be here. Perhaps slightly nervous, they've been chosen to speak tonight in no specific order, simply on the order in which they arrived to confirm that they were here. A row that seem the same. I assure you, they're not the only sorts of views that you will be hearing in the course of the evening. So I'll now move over to the first speaker of the night and introduce our first speaker tonight. He is the President of Supra, his name is Timothy Scriven.
Colleagues, I'm opposed to the agenda of this government on higher education. And I can see that saw most of those in attendance. We know that it will make education more exclusive. We know that it will make it harder for poor people, for women, for queer people, for Indigenous students, for students of colour and for students of disability to access university. However, I don't think we should rest at opposing or stopping deregulation. I wish to use this platform to call for free education. We know that Germany has recently made education free. We know that the same has happened in Turkey. We know that students in Quebec have defeated attempts to raise their fees and thus I bear a red patch on my lapel, just as they did. We know that these places are just a few of many. We can do it here and I believe we will. Marketisation is not simply a tool that can be used. It is not neutral. It grows like a cancer. It erodes everything built on solidarity and mutual inquiry and replaces it with transaction. It takes our warm alliances and scholarly community and dumps them in the icy waters of cash. Like J.R. Tolkien's ring, it promises opportunity, but only corrupts. Already this and all other Australian universities have begun to refer to themselves as having brands. And their students, they have begun to refer to as customers or as to consumers. I know of one student who said he was not doing the optional readings in a class because he could not see how they would quote-unquote "add value". Marketisation erodes not only the university of student experiences who cannot even afford to attend, but even for those students who can attend, it reduces the intrinsic value they place on knowledge and damns their learning down to that which they need to increase their earning power. We can continue towards marketisation or we can follow the example of student activists of Germany, Turkey, and Quebec in rejecting the idea that education should be a commodity. I know which I prefer. Thus, I call on this assembly to imagine a university which not only refuses a deregulated market, but also refuses the idea that learning should ever be a commodity, deregulated or otherwise. Don't let them tell you it's implausible. We make this university in this society and so we can transform it through struggle, just as others have done in their own nations. As in Berlin, as in Istanbul, and as in Montreal, we will win. Thank you.
Thank you Timothy. Thank you very much Timothy. Our next speaker is Julie McKay, Executive Director of UN Women Australia. Julie?
Thanks Adam, it's a hard act to follow him. Chancellor and Vice-Chancellor, thank you for providing the university community with a chance to share our views on the impact of the government's proposed changes to university fee structures tonight. I intend to focus on the impact of the proposed changes on women, but I preface my comments by saying that there are a number of groups that may be disadvantaged by the proposed changes. And my focus on women does not reduce the importance or impact of the changes on other affected groups. While much of the detail of how the proposed changes will actually come to life is still up for negotiation, I think there's an important role for students and the university community to continue advocating for a different model of education. I think it's also important that we discuss now the plans for what we do if these changes come into play and how we ensure equity under the proposed changes. We all know and agree that increases to tuition fees and interest rates and will continue to increase student debt. This will disproportionately impact women in two key ways. Firstly, the ABS reported just last week that the gender pay gap has now risen to 18.2%, a 20-year high. Due to existing pay inequality and the fact that women are more likely, as the Chancellor mentioned, to take a career break or work part-time to have children and balance caring responsibilities, it will take women longer to pay off their HECS debts, meaning they will pay significantly more interest over the life of that debt. It's a bigger conversation than tonight allows for, but we need to consider whether it would be possible for the government to halt interest rate charges during periods of parental leave or potentially for the first 12 months of a child's life if we are genuinely going to address this issue. Secondly, women and especially women from low socio-economic backgrounds- Secondly, women and especially women from lower socio-economic backgrounds are more sensitive to the cost factors of education and consequently more debt averse than their male counterparts. This means that women may opt out or continue to select less costly degrees, fearing accumulative debt load, and continue to perpetuate the gender bias that sees women dominate low-paid industries such as teaching and nursing. Going forward, it will be critical for the university to understand at what point in the process women get discouraged by the cost of a degree. And options to reduce that cost at the point where women first get discouraged need to be made. This may mean that we need from the outset a tiered structure as we approach this issue. I believe that the university must also establish a widely publicised gender equality fund using a proportion of private contributions and student fees. The fund could provide scholarships to women in assisting them to bring down the costs of their education with the aim of supporting them to pay off their loans within 10 years. The scholarships would need to be based on a needs assessment, the total cost of a course and the relative earning potential, with incentives for women entering non-traditional roles like engineering and IT. I urge the university leadership to provide a proactive strategy around how we ensure women are not disadvantaged by the proposed changes. I also urge the university community to invest in the education of women as a mechanism to drive economic growth and social equality.
Thank you, Julie. Our next speaker is the BA on and MA researcher and CPA, Vice President for the University of Sydney branch, Matthew Effenden.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start talking tonight with a bit of my background. I started at this university in 1994. Came in as a bright-eyed, bushy-tailed first year, and I've been here ever since. And I'm damn proud to have been here for 20 years. Not only as a student, but as a staff member. When I arrived, I thought I was going to be a primary school teacher. Within a couple of years, I realised that wasn't for me. The HECS scheme I was under then was a lot lower. I had the opportunity to change. To change the degree programme, to change the direction that my life was going. Something that with deregulation will be out of the park for most people. I decided, I always had an interest in things that are a little bit strange. And I thought, I'll do an honors degree. And I did my degree on people that worship aliens, as in, yeah, the people in space. And a lot of people said, you're wasting your time, it's a load of rubbish. Why are you bothering with that? Well, I can tell you why you would bother with that. On the 26th of March 1997, 39 members of the Heaven's Gate religious movement committed mass suicide because they believed there was a flying source of following the Halepot Comet. Most other people didn't want to study this area. But I had that freedom. I wasn't in a degree factory where the amount of money that I was going to owe sat at the back of my mind and I had to go through fast. After doing that, I decided to stay here and I'm now part of ICT. I provide the infrastructure here. I work in the frontline with students as they come in the lab. And I can tell you that this is not the environment students want. They don't want an environment where they're going to be under debt in a short matter of time. They want to be able to explore and you should be able to explore different ideas, new ideas, to challenge yourself. This economic racialist mindset affects many, especially those from a low socio-economic background. Women who will lose out in the workforce because of the gender inequality we have. And we, as one of the leading universities in this country, have an opportunity to stand up for those people. We see ourselves as the best and we are the best university in the country. And we should be leading the charge to say to the government, enough is enough. Start prioritising higher education. Don't expect students to pay more out of their pocket. Stop funding frivolous things like joint strike fighters that are already out of date and start putting into this institution. If we do that, there is no limit as to what this country can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Matthew, I think you would have made an awesome primary school teacher, but that's another point altogether. Our next speaker is Women's Officer for the New South Wales branch of NUS and SRC Counselor, Amy Knox.
Good evening. I am here to talk about how decreasing government contributions in favour of relying on increased student fees will be detrimental for students for the reasons already previously listed by speakers. But today I want to bring attention to the fact that what is damaging for all students in these changes will be even worse for students who are women. In the last couple of decades, we have made a lot of progress for women participating in higher education. Young Australian women actually make the decision to go to university 1.4 times more than young men. However, women on average only earn 58% of what men with the same bachelor degree will earn in their lifetime. And under the current system, empirical evidence has shown that women already take twice as long to pay off their HECS debt. There are a number of reasons for this, such as the fact that women often take time off work to look after children and family members and are more likely to work part-time for these same reasons. The government's changes to reduce their contributions in the higher education system have proposed the imposition of interest on students' HECS debt and to charge these fees in a deregulated environment. Modelling done by the NTU shows that under such a scheme, a graduate with a three-year accounting degree who elects to take a break of eight years from their career and transitions back into the workforce over three years, working part-time, will take about 36 years to repay their HECS debt. This scenario is entirely impossible and almost predictable for a lot of women who are interested in starting up a family. And it proves that if these proposals go through, women will have to bear a huge burden of debt for most of their lifetimes if they ever take time out of their career to start a family. The Minister for Education, Christopher Pine, on the 7.30 report, refused to accept that women would be disadvantaged by his changes. When Pine was questioned about his higher education package and the impact it will have on women and low-income earners, Pine simplified the issue and to use offensive stereotypes about what women study to justify his case. Pine's refusal to look at this with a gendered lens means that a huge gap in his proposed reforms and women will fall through this crack if we do not encourage the government to continue to fund university. So tonight I implore this university to do what is right by students and consider women students in particular. These cuts to government contributions and increasing reliance on student payments make the system inequitable for women. Women have made huge achievements in higher education and many of the top women academics in the world came to this very university thanks to government funding. So I'll finish off tonight by saying this. That this government and this university cannot let women down now, particularly as we have come so far already. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Our next speaker is President of the University of Sydney Union Alumni and Friends, Daniel Ferman.
Thanks, Adam. Um, good evening. We welcome the opportunity to speak tonight on the possible future for the university in the setting of the unpalatable reality of higher tuition fees. If we don't like it, I think, however, our challenge is to identify the best pressure points to influence changing that policy. And this university's strength is its alumni network. And it needs to be marshalled in a pitch for what is achievable in this environment. We have amongst us people who can pressure the Prime Minister, ministers, professionals, regional politicians and journalists. We can and we should. Great universities like Harvard, the SPON, Beijing, they don't see alumni benefiting without putting value back and nor should we. So we affirm the Senate's position on access, inclusion and equity. But this must be advanced through our networks to government and opinion leaders. But we need agreement here in this process of consultation on a sustainable model. And having got one, we must then reach out to every alumni and pressure point we know. That said, our alumni chapter is agnostic on the model's details. We defer that to others. I want to speak tonight about talent management of our alumni cohort. An alumni cohort that acknowledges one of the finest experiences money did buy. Our own money partially raised historically from compulsory fees. Managed inside building assets belonging to you, to students, to alumna and alumna. Tived compulsorily from when we were students and supported from federal education funds raised by compulsory taxation. So let's not get too delicate about the voluntary and compulsory thing. Except the world is changing, but don't lose our moral compass. I want to envisage a differently modelled University of Sydney. We must go into a blue sky of better friend raising, friend raising as well as fundraising. Complement valuable fundraising with better network building. Recognise that networks form outside formal teaching, outside lecture theatres and tutorials. This is what the university union has done for 100 years. It nurtures and grows the 200 clubs and societies of the student experience. Its infrastructure is where communities are formed and as a third, rather distant but financially critical, it feeds and victuals those communities on their myriad journeys. We've got to grow this, but it takes money. Access cards, SAF fees and commercial services. But if there is to be a greater resource pool from higher fees, let a greater proportion of that be channeled to the bodies doing the student experience. This sharper focus student experience friend-making can be moulded in later years and morph into improved university philanthropy. Friend-raising can engage alumni decades after graduation. And when they're older and come back to more active university engagement, bring up the inestimable capital of a Sydney university student experience. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel. Our next speaker is an alumna of the University of Sydney and a current professional staff member, Rebecca Plumb.
Education is a social good. An affordable public education has been a really important factor, I think, in Australia being a stable and egalitarian society. Affordable education is key to developing the knowledge, the research and technology skills that Australia needs to do well in the modern globalised economy. Affecting the access to education affects not just the individual, but our whole society. I grew up in rural Victoria, going to a public school in the 1980s. And in 1990, Bob Hawke told us that we had to become the clever country. And looking around, that's what I saw. I saw everyone having a fair go. Everyone could get to school, everyone could get to university. When I started in 95 here, HECS fees were only $2,500 a year. When I finished, it was indexed at CPI and I paid that off pretty easily, in fact, without really noticing it. That wasn't the case for my brother or sister who started just a few years after me and certainly not the case for people who are coming into the system. Um, and... I never imagined that anyone who I went to school with wouldn't be able to access education in the same way that I did. But I don't think the same is going to be true of my three-year-old daughter when she will get to the time to come to university. I'd like... The government's current proposals for deregulation of university fees, coupled with the changes to the way interest accrues on HECS, will make degrees severely unaffordable for many in Australia. It will disproportionately affect those from lower SES backgrounds and those entering less well-paying professions such as nursing and teaching. And as many people have mentioned, it will also affect those who need to take time out from the workforce, especially in the years soon after finishing university. And clearly, this will disproportionately affect women who are still the ones most likely to take time out of the workforce to raise young children. I would like to see this university push hard to find alternatives or push the government hard to find alternatives to fee deregulation overall. But even if we can't do that, then at least we should push hard to retain Australia's world-class education loan system with its current repayment threshold and indexation at CPI. If government cuts necessitate fee increases, it's fundamentally important that they should be applied progressively with the lowest earning professions charged progressively less.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Our next speaker is a postgraduate student, Simon Hill.
Good evening. Uh, what a privilege it is to be here. I am simply a student who values the education I get and the opportunities that this vibrant campus provides. Um, I've done many things from comedy reviews to volunteer work to lunchtime ball and sometimes I even do my readings for class. But I'm here because I believe in the value of a world-class education that this uni has provided. Um, tonight we're here to discuss how fee deregulation might impact the university. Um, I understand many of the concerns about the proposed changes because I was an undergrad not too long ago. Um, but these changes also affect all postgrads. And it's important that any changes work to the benefit of all students, especially future generations. Um, now, as I said, I'm a JD student. Um, and after a year of study, I realised that my education is barely distinguishable from those studying undergraduate law. And in the words of the Vice Chancellor, my JD is just a very expensive Bachelor of Laws. From the last few years, postgraduates have been the cash cow of the university. Used to subsidise research in undergraduate education. Um, and what that's done is turned me into a commodity rather than an opportunity. We now have the opportunity to realise how exceptional Sydney University is and secure us as a top-tier world-class university. By having additional resources, we can provide the world-leading education our undergraduates deserve. Not just adding internships and mentoring, um, but radically reforming it, providing smaller class sizes for being taught directly by world-leading experts. By changing the way we teach, we can instead be teaching all students how to solve problems with expertise across multiple disciplines. Postgraduate education can then be built upon this, not just as another iteration of an undergraduate degree, but again, uh, building us into the community of scholars. Now, research students can be provided the infrastructure and funding they need to create international linkages and groundbreaking PhDs. Coursework students can access scholarships of a higher order, enabling them to work first-hand with world-class academics and diverse groups of students. In doing so, providing better employment outcomes for both, we can ensure our PhDs are even more sought after and coursework graduates become benchmark for national leadership and expertise. Um, so what am I saying? Am I saying we should deregulate? No, I'm not saying that. I am saying, though, that this may be beyond us. Despite the views that we are going to say and the things we're going to do, uh, it may be the case that deregulation happens. And if so, what I want is the changes I have just talked about to happen. If deregulation occurs, then we need to be able to hold the university to account to see where our money is going. The university needs to develop a national index for gauging the value of a degree, revealing where fees are actually being spent. As a result, if we're promised a higher quality education, let's see it happen. So that through our hard work and excellence to find us, we can realise this vision I've talked about. Thank you.
Our next speaker is another student of the university, George Tan.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's a great pleasure to be able to speak here tonight as a student at the University of Sydney. We have heard from a variety of speakers today and I feel the statement put forward by the Senate that the university is committed to the economic, social, ethical and political development as well as growth of Australia will soon become nothing more than a fantasy. The proposed Abbott policy fee, uh, sorry. The proposed Abbott policy of fee deregulation is an attack on our students, staff and this university itself. Studying here is becoming increasingly more difficult due to the higher cost of living. I think you're kidding yourselves if the youth allowance rate is going to pay for rent on campus. It has been proposed that the increased equity scholarship funding will somehow offset fee deregulation. As it stands, the equity scholarships are not, in many cases, enough for students to survive. I've done some simple maths for you. Our cheapest accommodation provider, SUV, costs about $275 a week. With the highest rate of youth allowance, an E12 recipient would have $55 remaining each week to live on to cover their expenses. My textbooks per semester cost $400. If a low SES student was to study the recommended six hours per subject on a full-time load, that would come out to 36 hours per week. I commute from Campbelltown every day for five, sorry, two hours every day return. You can see how my timetable slowly gets filled up. I did a simple calculation of how much the youth allowance would pay me. It's about $7.14. Does anybody in this room get paid that low? No. Access scholarships may be enough to get by in smaller cities, but not in areas like Sydney. How will the government's one-size-fits-all approach fix this? How can disadvantaged students achieve their potential if they cannot concentrate on their studies? Scholarships would need to increase to $35,000 per year to off... to offset fee deregulation and living cost. If the university is prepared to give that to the students, I'll be waiting for my cheque at the end of the evening. I am not. I am a proud student who does not have family to support him at his time here at university. I lost my mother last year and she was the only support I had. My mother had a dream and a vision for me to come to university and spend all of her life savings in my first semester at this university. My fondest memory is walking towards the quad and signing in and my mum said, George, you made it. I hope that many capable students at this university will be attracted, but I don't think that will happen. Instead, they have to choose a more affordable education elsewhere. The internet in my mind, the opportunity, opportunity to make a difference today. And we shouldn't, the university should not care about the continued growth, should, sorry, should care about the continued growth of our country and it should update its scholarship, not at the expense of its students. Thank you.
I love to do that. Thank you very much. Good luck, George. And next speaker is Michael Thompson, President of the University of Sydney, NTU branch. Michael.
Thank you. Many people have been shocked by the harsh first-abbate budget. The proposals to change higher education and for further fee deregulation should not, should not be seen in isolation. The federal budget must be condemned. It's a huge attack on ordinary working people. The cuts, the changes to the health system, universities, to welfare favour the rich and the powerful at the expense of the poor, the unemployed, students, the elderly and the sick. The angry, huge, large demonstrations in response to this budget are welcomed. NTU polling shows higher education is an important issue for many people. And importantly, it shows that many coalition MPs would lose their seats. Christopher Pyne would lose his seat with a swing of fifteen percent. The government, the government is proposing further deregulation and privatisation of higher education. Summit universities, particularly at GO8 universities, particularly VCs at G O8 universities have welcomed the fee deregulation. Fee deregulation is not about equity. It means that some degrees will go up to over a hundred thousand dollars when you wrap on the market interest rate. It means that universities will increase student fees to make up for the government funding, twenty percent funding cut. The same people who support the deregulation of fees are cutting services and staff at universities. Talk is cheap. There is no real commitment to people of low economic socio-backgrounds, socio-economic backgrounds. At Sydney University, they are proposing to cut library services and a hundred and fifty-six individual members of staff, library staff are facing redundancy. Don't talk to them about equity. Don't talk to them about the management caring about people from low socio-economic backgrounds. Staff learning, student learning conditions are staff working conditions. The Abbott government and its supporters want to attack both. Some of the talk in response to the budget is talking about tinkering with it. Maybe not the full interest, market interest rate. This gives the budget a wink, it gives it a nod. It has been complicit in the huge attack on ordinary people. The NTU condemns the Abbott budget, particularly the higher education proposals. Every part, every aspect of this budget needs to be fought. Those of us at universities should not be tinkering with the proposals. We should be part of the campaign against the budget and we should be leading the campaign against the attacks on university, university students and university staff.
Thank you very much, Michael. Our next speaker is completing a PhD in biological sciences. This is Jun Tong.
Hello, everyone. I'm a, I'm a first-year PhD student in biology. I'm a scientist student and I have no political affiliations. Uh, spoke of poetical symmetry. I've been sitting next to Michael there and they're young as ever also. But I wear no badge. Um, we've had a planet full of examples of how to run universities well over the last few decades and I'm afraid the Pyne reforms are not one of them. The evidence says so. I seek to address the financial disincentives these proposed changes will induce in those disciplines whose graduates are not known for making money. There is little discernible advantage in earnings for those students who graduate from the arts and from the sciences. We have much to lose if students turn away from the arts, the sciences, the fine arts, the pure sciences, Adam. And loosen will will, if this institution seeks to charge a prohibitively expensive amount of money for a degree that will not guarantee a lucrative salary. Parents of talented artists and scientists in the future will be asking their sons and daughters, so you want to study a BA? For B science, astronomy, conservation biology? Are you sure this is wise? Is it affordable? That's the question we are asking. Is it affordable to study what you feel most passionate about? We are one of the richest nations on this planet and yet we are going to erect an exorbitant paywall between those doors and future young talents of this country. This debate, this debate is not only about pricing our students from an education of their own choosing, of their own passion. This debate is also the loss of talent that we will suffer if we impose exorbitant disincentives to study things that don't lead to money. This is not an issue, only an issue about equity. It is also about a drop in quality. The talent pool will dilute and the talent pool will shrink. What does this mean for us as a university? We'll produce fewer artists, we'll produce fewer scientists and thinkers, we'll have more lawyers, managers and accountants. Market-based systems simply don't work for education. We have an entire planet full of universities to see that they don't work and borne out repeatedly in attempts in countries such as the United States to get off their market-driven education system. So why are we adopting a system that everyone else is abandoning? We risk sacrificing our nation's best export, our nation's best export in education on the altar of fringe class fare economics and we will be all the poorer for it. The Pyre reforms are a disincentive to academic excellence. They're a disincentive to arts and the sciences.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is I, I'd suggest respectfully, if you've heard ten speakers before you chose to boo, you can't really complain that your views aren't represented. So let's, with a degree of dignity, hear all the speakers this evening. Alex Dor is a councillor on Supra. Yours, Alex.
Uh, thank you very much, Adam. And thank you to the Chancellor and Vice-Chancellor for the opportunity to speak to this motion. You know, tonight's event was created by mostly Labor Senate fellows to be a partisan attack on the Abbott government. But let's be very clear about opponents of reform and the student money that the speakers tonight have received. Speaker number twenty-two received forty-two thousand dollars of student money. Speakers number fifteen and fourteen receive a similar amount. Speaker number one receives over fifty-two thousand dollars. Speaker number sixteen and seventeen receives twenty-six, received twenty-six thousand dollars. Speaker number eighteen receives six thousand dollars. And I could go on and on and on. But when you hear these people speak, you hear the entitlement generation starting again and again and again. Now, I'm glad to see that the Australian government is beginning to stop the gravy train with considering its reversal to SAF. But it's funny, isn't it? That the loudest opponents of reform and they're screaming now, this is the future that they want for Australian universities, where dissidents, people that disagree with them are held down when they try and put their views forward, that they are the ones that actually speak the loudest. But let's be very clear about this. The opponents of reform in this debate are people who say they want student money used appropriately. But they're people who have no issue with student money being used to rent jumping castles and mechanical bulls, hold a radical sex week, organise rallies against liberals on refugees in Gaza and all manner of issues that have nothing to do with tertiary education. People who think it's appropriate to manhandle the Foreign Minister of Australia, Julie Bishop, and people who think it's appropriate to burn effigies of our democratically-elected Education Minister in Christopher Pyne.
So let's just hear the speaker. You have every right to disagree with what they're saying, but please don't shout over the top of it so they can't even be heard. That's just a basic modicum of respect, please. Continue, Alex.
Thanks, Adam. This conglomerate of vested interest groups has no credibility. Not only has it no credibility, but it's become a significant obstacle to reform in Australia. But the reforms proposed are fair. And in fact, it was former Prime Minister Paul Keating who said, and I quote, "There is no such thing as a free education. Somebody has to pay. Insistents with no charges, those somebody's are all taxpayers." This is a pretty important point. A free higher education system is one paid for by the taxes of all, the majority of whom haven't had the privilege of a university education. Ask yourself if you think that's fair. This is a matter of fairness. Students with a degree earn over seventy-five percent more than those who do not go on to higher education at secondary school, after secondary school. Over their lifetime, they earn over one million dollars more. Their fees are not paid upfront and nowhere in the world is there offering as good as here in Australia. I could go on and give you a lot of information. I encourage you to have a look at some of the speeches that Education Minister has given. But I will say that these reforms are fair. They'll restore opportunity to the sector and I'm very proud to support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is a student from regional Australia, Caitlin Garber. Caitlin.
I live in a regional city with a population of over forty thousand people. My experiences of growing up in a regional area are what have led me here to the University of Sydney so that I can gain the skills required to improve the quality of life for these people. Although my hometown is five hours inland from Sydney, it is not classified as rural enough for any benefit schemes that any university or UAC offers. My ability to access a high-level education in my areas of interest came down to a few variables. The cost and availability of accommodation, my parents' ability to support me financially and emotionally and finally, my ATA or intellectual ability. I was provided with some ATA relief through the Educational Access Scheme because I am a young carer and my last eighteen months of schooling were very difficult. My first point that I would like to make tonight is that regional and rural students are being priced out of the city education market. We have the additional financial burden of living out of home on top of our university fees. Moving away from the cities, the support circle of our hometown is difficult. When I moved to Sydney, I knew no one. These challenges are almost impossible for some to overcome. Many are giving up on group of eight universities and universities in general. If people like me were forced to pay more for a higher education, I fear all but the most privileged would give up altogether. My second point is that most people are unaware of the bias against rural and regional students in youth allowance and how this affects our ability to attend universities. In some regional and rural areas, including mine, getting the amount of work to be classified as independent is a significant challenge. It also means deferring study for two years, which not all universities allow. The requirements of youth allowance additionally stipulate that if you are a student from regional or remote area, your parental income is also taken into account. This is only the case for regional and remote students. We are already starting on the back foot. This leads me to my third and final point. What sort of university does the University of Sydney want to be? There isn't a week that goes by that my heart doesn't break a little bit further for my friends back home. Often I feel guilty because my parents are currently in a position to support me financially and many of my friends do not have these options. I feel like I have deserted them and they feel like I have moved on. There are many wonderful people with great minds who have no chance of accessing any university, let alone a university like ours. Ultimately, it comes down to whether priorities of this university that I am very proud of, why? Does the university want to become a university of the city privileged or a place where minds gather regardless of their background? Is there a reason that education is still so strongly influenced by where you were born and which family you were born into? I am blessed to be here, but many are not in the same boat. The future policies of this university will affect the lives of many people. Um, and I want to thank the university for holding such a forum so they can learn more about their students who helped to make this institution what it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your perspective there, Caitlin. If this was a slide old, you'd be through to the next round. Caitlin, well done. Our next speaker, Nick Robber, is a member of the academic staff and on the branch committee of NTU. Nick.
Fee deregulation means the entrenchment of educational disadvantage and the enclosure of knowledge in our society. That's not irresponsible exaggeration. It's an accurate characterisation that follows from careful modelling done by a number of authorities. A key argument put by deregulation supporters, including Michael Spence, is that only it can safeguard quality. But quality has a nasty habit of lining up with privilege. And there's a simple analogy that shows why Michael's quality argument for deregulation is so wrong. In a food shortage, you couldn't argue that the rich should get adequate nourishment alone. Education is a human right, just like food resources. It too should be equally available to everyone. Vice Chancellor, you've disguised your opposition to that principle with progressive-sounding cavillance about equity. But in essence, you've sided with Pyne, Pocky, Abbott, the same people who want to comprehensively dismantle social protections in this country. It's simply shameful that you are supporting these thugs. You're out of step, both with public opinion and with the good of society. Let's be clear here. There's nothing about the University of Sydney that justifies our flourishing at the expense of Wurongong or of Southern Queensland. Mediocre standards for all is much more just than educational disadvantage of the many for the benefit of the few. In a just world, free public education would be funded through higher taxes, particularly on millionaire CEOs like the Vice Chancellor on the time period this year. That's not repugnation, it's an essential political and social project. Ms Hutchinson, Dr Spence, you should be using your influence to publicly oppose billions of dollars that could go to education being thrown instead at warplanes, at the persecution of refugees and the destruction of the environment. Instead, instead, you have shown how that Margaret Channel vision, cooperation with the most backward forces in Australian politics and an implacable opposition to genuine consultation. We can only imagine the contortions and evasions that must have taken place in the secret senate meeting that evidently decided that a motion explicitly on deregulation wouldn't be debated tonight. Dr Spence, Ms Hutchinson, you say you're lobbying government, but it's exactly that disastrous and failed inside-the-tent strategy that has emboldened Pyne to now blackmail us with cuts to research funding. You and other university leaders have been complicit with the erosion of public higher education in Australia. Your actions show that you're unfit to lead an institution supposedly committed to the collegial harnessing of reason for the betterment of society as a whole. For the good of this society, we must fight deregulation and we must win. That's a precondition for the development and growth of everyone, not just the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. We're finally halfway through our list of speakers. Next up, former president of the University of Sydney SRC, former president of NUS, Barbara Walmsley.
Thank you for having me tonight. As the uni, as the first university to admit men, and it was men at the time, based on the principle of merit rather than their family background, the University of Sydney has a proud history of commitment to equity. To support the package of reforms to university funding put forward by the coalition government is to betray that proud history and to take a step further back toward a society where opportunity is once again determined by wealth and social status rather than by merit. The University of Sydney already struggles to attract students who are not from advantaged backgrounds with one of the lowest proportions of low SES students of any university in the country. Not because of the competitive nature of entry to this university, not because these students are not achieving the ATA required to gain entry, but because these students do not feel that the University of Sydney is the place for them. Study after study and statistics from this Study after study and statistics from this very institution show that students from comprehensive public schools perform better than their independent and Catholic school counterparts. If Sydney University is, as it purports to be, dedicated to fostering the next generation of the best and brightest minds, it simply cannot be a university that supports the coalition's education reforms as they are overwhelmingly reforms that disadvantage and discourage those who are not from wealthy backgrounds. Furthermore, the proposed reforms to fees and funding discourage students from going into professions that are not well-paid. The University of Sydney law graduate with a crushing debt will think twice before taking a poorly-paid job at a community legal centre instead of a potentially lucrative role at a high-profile city law firm. Are these the kinds of graduates that we want to produce? Graduates that are driven by the need to escape as quickly as possible from a huge student debt, rather than graduates who are driven by the need to enrich their communities with the skills and the knowledge that they have gained at this fine institution? Thanks to a progressive taxation system, those who earn higher salaries already contribute more to the public purse. If there is a shortfall of funding for higher education, let's look to the tax loopholes that allow the well-off to avoid their obligations. Rather than putting a hefty price tag on what should be a right, not a privilege, education is a public good. A more educated and equal society has lower health costs, lower crime rates, and higher rates of democratic and civic participation. This is not just a conversation about what fees should be charged, nor just about what kind of university we here at Sydney want to be, it's about what kind of society we want to be. Do we want one that's based on opportunity, where opportunity is based on merit, or one that's based on what family you happen to be born into?
Thank you very much, Barbara. Our next speaker is a former SRC President, Ellie Howes.
Thanks, Adam. Good evening, everyone. Much of the discussion so far has focused on federal government policy and the shape of government contributions to tertiary study. I actually want you to think about something different. I want you to consider what our dream university would look like. How could we create it? How could we improve it? We need to define this vision of our ideal university, then discuss how we can support it. I propose that there are core aspects of this vision that we can agree on. First, that merit is the foremost criteria through which students gain entry and succeed. Not money or wealth, not parental education, not place of birth, but merit. We must also recognise the structural and social inequalities that exist and that prevent access to higher education. Second, that our student experience remain the best in Australia and arguably the best in the world. Campus culture, residential life, the performing arts, sport, and student leadership are all important opportunities for a university to offer. Third, that our university education is about critical thinking and challenging the status quo through our learning and research. Fourth, that our staff and researchers are paid decently, with fair workplace conditions and the ability to bargain collectively. I say that as a proud NTU member. Fifth, fifth, that we link our research and teaching with real outcomes in the wider society. That we support and drive innovation in new technologies and more sustainable, ethical, and healthier ways of living, learning, and doing business. And finally, most importantly, that we have an inclusive, supportive community for staff and students built on these core values of equality of opportunity, fairness, justice, respect, and the pursuit of knowledge. I don't believe we can fulfil this vision if we burden students with increasing levels of debt. Sure, we could have plenty of money to spend on nice new buildings, but we'd lose out on some other areas. Our university's core values, such as equality of opportunity, would be seriously compromised. But I'm also aware that we can't strive towards a world-class education if we don't have the money to grow our essential infrastructure, support our teaching, research, our scholarships for students, and so on. If governments won't fund our vision of a university, and we don't want to make debt or family wealth a requirement of entry to or success in our institution, then how are we going to achieve our vision? I'm not actually proposing a solution, that's not my role. All I'm asking is for the university community to define and commit to the kind of vision I've outlined, and then work out how we can fund this vision without compromising our central values. I'm asking the university to commit to a wide-ranging consultation process for the next strategic plan. I want the kind of university that I've outlined at the core of this strategy, not the funding model. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellie. Our next speaker is the current President of the University of Sydney Union, Tara Wannigan-Aika.
Thank you. I stand here with an immense sense of pride to be a part of our student union. I have no apprehension in saying that we are, without any element of exaggeration, the heart of this university. We are a group of over forty thousand people who pursue our own lives through a myriad of schemes, opportunities, and activities. We live and die through the interest, contribution, and enthusiasm of students, and we have done so at the union for over a hundred and forty years. Staff, students, alumni, we all sit here with the grace of knowing that universities are not just purely academic institutions. They exist to embolden the whole spirit of a person and to broaden their social dynamic. Ironically, it was Barnaby Joyce of all people who said very similar words in an impassioned speech in support of voluntary student unionism in 2005. "We must go forward and come up with a reasonable solution that will achieve parity inequality", he said, before admitting that his stance was peculiar from a conservative point of view. I think the one thing that we can take away from this is that education and the formative experience it provides students is a universally acclaimed social public good which should be equally available to all. The dead horse society of the late Robin Williams's fame encapsulates this very idea. Education is priceless. It provides not only technical skills and career prospects, but it shapes our society into one which reaches forward into innovation, debate, and contest of ideas. As a student of Sydney, I have been proud to witness this university take strong stances in its capacity as a social leader. This university bans smoking on campus, the university built a centre for obesity research, and this university just last week announced groundbreaking research into nanoparticle-based technologies to better enable cancer imaging and therapy. With such a fantastic track record, it disappoints me however to say that this university now appears to be hailing inaccessibility to education as its next achievement. I'm not proud anymore. While our student union on a comparatively tiny budget compromises profit in the name of being accessible to students from all backgrounds and socio-economic levels, this university and government is claiming that a set number of scholarships and bursaries will hush the angry disadvantaged. This is utterly ridiculous. This arena of personal, social, ethical, and professional development should not be denied to any prospective student. To do so is to shoot Australia's future in the foot. It is disgraceful that in a country where we laud the fair go as our motto, that some students will be required to prioritise debt over their future. We should be better than this. Standing in the great hall of a university that has done so much in the name of society and boasts an alumni of the strongest minds and leaders, I am perplexed. So, to the decision-makers in this room, it saddens me to confess that there are very few students who would look to you and say, "Oh, Captain, my captain". I can only hope this changes after nine.
Thank you, Tara. Edward Maud is the Director of the University of Sydney Union. Edward?
I am the affectionately named speaker number seventeen that Alex Dawe referred to, and I've put a Radical Sex and Consent Day shirt on just for him, just for you. The Minister of Pine's reforms represent an ideological radicalism. They stand in contrast to the high-quality, efficient, and free tertiary education systems of the Scandinavian countries. They seek to replicate the systems of the UK and the US, which host the most stratified university systems in the world, and struggle with severely unequal distributions of opportunity. When I read the Sydney Morning Herald on twenty-eighth May this year, I was disgusted to read Dr Spence's proclamation that he welcomes a minister who has opted to pursue controversial reform. He sold us down the river on that one, and has ever since. The deregulation and marketisation of this reform, that this reform would entrench, betrays the very ideals of a public university. A century ago, zero point one per cent of the population was enrolled in university. Following the Second World War, the Commonwealth increasingly financed tertiary education to facilitate economic growth. Enrollment rates steadily increased, and many new universities were founded. In nineteen seventy-three, the Whitlam Government abolished fees, causing the participation rates to increase, especially among low-ESF groups. Strong public investment in higher education in the latter half of the twentieth century facilitated economic growth and made our society more equal. It has been followed by a process of marketisation and funding cuts, which are being inflicted on my generation, ironically by the very people who benefited from the more enlightened policies of yesteryear. The practice of assessing the value of a course according to the income that it may one day generate is of particular concern to me. In twenty ten, I moved to Sydney from Newcastle. I was young, queer, socially awkward, and struggled with mental illness. For the past forty years, I have worked over twenty hours a week and studied full-time. I came to Sydney to study law, not because I aspired to receive a large paycheck from a huge corporation, but because I hoped to use my knowledge to serve those who cannot afford representation. I am unworthy to make very much money, yet because of the speculated income-earning prospects of some of my colleagues, this university would seek to charge me in excess of one hundred thousand dollars, upon which this government would seek to charge me interest. Now, we need something concrete out this evening, and the way it's being set up, that's not very likely. So I have here a motion put by the Sydney University Education Action Group that I want to take a vote on now. The motion is this, that this gathering condemns the education reforms announced in the twenty-fourteen budget. In particular, we condemn the cuts to university funding, the proposed interest rate on HECS debt, and the deregulation of fees. We call on all bodies of the university, including you, Michael Spence, to campaign against these measures and for a government-funded quality education system for all. All those in favour, I'd ask you to raise your hands now. Take a look around, Michael, we've got at least three-quarters of the room. Those against for fairness? Nobody. One. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Our next speaker is the former President of the Union, current editor of Ollie Swire, Asta Rajwani.
Thank you. In two thousand and nine, Dr Spence said, "We need to have a national conversation about whether it is socially equitable for the children of the wealthy to be educated at the expense of the poor. Sydney University wants to be an elite, but not elitist university, one that admits people from all social backgrounds. Certainly, it has set a strong benchmark of social inclusion when it comes to women and people from racially diverse backgrounds, the two groups that I identify with. The university's strategic plan outlines a social responsibility to attract promising students, whatever their social or cultural background may be. However, in two thousand and twelve, less than nine per cent of students enrolled at Sydney came from low SES backgrounds, nearly half the national average of fifteen point seven per cent. And yet, the higher education reforms proposed by the Australian Government in its budget that may receive support from this university suggest that outcomes will disproportionately impact women and minority groups and intensify inequality. For example, female science graduates can be expected to continue paying off their student debt for sixteen point four years, up from the current eight point four years. Her repayments would nearly triple from forty-four thousand two hundred to a hundred and twenty-three thousand. But if these are just numbers to you, let us be clear on one thing, this is regressive rather than progressive. If these numbers persist, women like me will not be able to attend university. As we've heard repeatedly, women tend to have lower incomes after graduation. The trickle-down economics model that Dr Ian Young advocates for is not reputable amongst economists or the wider community because rather than redistributing wealth and opportunity across the community, it concentrates in the already privileged segments of society. And what of scholarships to support students from disadvantaged backgrounds? Firstly, the student body as a whole will continue to fund these scholarships with the university's capacity to charge higher fees. But as Oxford has taught Dr Spence, scholarships are not a silver bullet either. In two thousand and nine, he said, "We had one of the more generous scholarship schemes in the UK, and we had a difficulty in getting people to take up financial assistance. The sociology of disadvantage is very complicated. It is a great mystery, but the theory was that they were afraid of being labelled. These are tricky things." I believe, Dr Spence, these tricky things are also known as systemic inequality in a privileged, elite institution where those who are marginalized do not deserve and are entitled to any of these benefits. Deregulating fees has the potential to create an inequitable system that could lock out many lower socio-economic backgrounds. As such, this university needs to prioritise, while reprioritise, while research is a core, perhaps first we need to make financial concessions for accessibility so that students can continue to do these, to do this research. We need to have a system that privileges all students, not just the elite.
Thank you, Asta. Our next speaker is a university as part of the Elite Athlete Programme, Lina Kuri.
Good evening. And yes, aside from being a student and an athlete, I'm also a volunteer coach in the Sydney University Hockey Club and the Vice President of the Sydney University Sport and Fitness Management Committee. Now, I'd like to diverge a little from the debate and speak about the strategic future. I'd like to speak from an athlete and student's perspective about what sport currently brings and what sport can potentially bring this university if sport were to receive an increase in funding following the proposed changes, and why we need to continually invest in its future. Sport is integral to this university. It offers students, athletes, staff alike, the ability to participate and to be involved. Aside from being to faculty days, into vast events, the sporting clubs themselves, and lunchtime social sport, and aside from the obvious benefits of health, wellbeing, and enjoyment, it enhances the collective culture of this university. We have athletes and clubs representing us. Our sporting teams and events bring people together, and we come together under Sydney University banner. The sporting clubs themselves foster a strong alumni. It gives people the opportunity to give back and stay connected with this university. This is evidenced by the number of coaches, assistants, physios, and managers, whom are predominantly volunteers and willing to give back their time to the clubs themselves. Now, from a personal athlete perspective, I came to this university from Hobart, Tasmania, from a public school background, where the strong sporting culture and strong sporting reputation, the quality sporting facilities, and arguably the country's best elite athlete programme, has given me and all of the opportunities, has given me a number of opportunities as well as the athletes here. We've been able to combine both our sporting and academic endeavours. I play hockey. We are not a professional sport, we are not in the media spotlight, and we've had to fund most of our sporting trips and national camps throughout our careers. Without programmes such as the Elite Athlete Programme and sport art received, I would have been forced to rely on AIS selection, where it's very difficult to pursue tertiary studies alongside. Sport at this university is therefore socially inclusive. It gives people from all different backgrounds and socio-economic statuses the ability to pursue tertiary education alongside their sporting endeavours, and one in which many would not have had the opportunity to do so without the financial and support from this university. I personally believe sport is integral to this university. It brings people together from lunchtime sport for students and staff to the twenty elite athletes who display the University of Sydney banner at the Commonwealth Games. However, if Sydney universities retain its strong sporting reputation from an elite sporting stance, as well as increasing the participation of students and staff, sport at this university and the programmes, clubs, and must continue to grow. If sport were to receive an increase in funding following the proposed changes, this can occur. It would allow for the continual improvement of our sporting facilities, sponsorships, and the number of programmes and events on university grounds. Sport is more than just a game. It's more than winning or losing, and it brings people together. And if sport were to receive an increase in funding, it will contribute to enhancing the collective and diverse culture of this university, which I personally believe is incredibly important.
Thank you very much, Anna. Our next speaker from the Conservatorium of Music, Anna Reid.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to say that I'm a proud teacher, I love my students, I'm also a proud researcher, I really love what I'm doing. And one of the things that I love doing is looking at how text enables you to understand what's going on. So I'd like to say Australia is a country that proudly states that it embraces diversity in culture, background, religion, age, and all of the other things. And I agree with the Government Education Policy Outcome Three statement, which says it's going to promote growth in economic productivity and social wellbeing through access to quality higher education, international education, and international quality research. But I disagree with the associated strategy where a single, isolated sentence declares their real aim for higher education. Australia's higher education system is the key to our economic prosperity. Who is the "our" that is being referred to? A conglomerate of Australians, or business, or individual people? More importantly... More importantly, where has the concept of social wellbeing gone? For me, the idea of social wellbeing is tied up with a notion of social justice, where the unique character and desires and activities of people contribute to social rather than economic growth. An individual’s ability to contribute to social growth is, in part, predicated by the quality of their education. In essence, universities develop people’s capacity to lead Australia’s social growth. A key concept in social growth is that diversity is fostered. In a university context, this means that an individual’s unique skills and interests are enhanced through the formal interactions with folk who’ve already grappled with creating new knowledge in similar areas. People learn from people, and people learn to value difference from those same meetings. In my own field, the creative arts, I know that graduates’ creative output is going to have a strong impact on the way that society sees itself. Every society is known by its art, dance, music, architecture, textiles, media, literature and the result of their creative artist’s engagement with the world. I also know that there is no direct job associated with their career choice, and that they will probably have multiple small jobs along the way, and if they are lucky, they may produce enough income to live happily. But there’s a flow-through problem. Creative artists are usually at the fringe of an acceptable career when they start in higher education. Prior to students even starting, the cost of developing as a creative artist is seen by many as an indulgence. As graduates, they have to be entrepreneurial to find work, and many don’t. So an increase in student fees for this particular group of people, coupled with a lower threshold for repayment, will render many university courses impossibly unattractive to the very people needed by society to promote societal growth.
Thank you very much, Anna. Speaking of the 21, Vice President of the SRC. I get the impression of the 29 already. Max Hall, take it away, Max.
I would note that so far tonight we’ve focused a lot on inequality. Now, I wasn’t allowed PowerPoint, and I don’t have the freedom to wander around the stage like some have. But what I can do is speak on behalf of students against the so-called reforms that the government is proposing. I speak against the deregulation of fees and the idea that a university education is some commodity that ought to be thrown to the market. I speak to the overwhelming opposition of students to changes to HECS that would see them saddled with debt for the majority of their working lives. And with the limited time available, I want to speak about the effects that these changes will have on students who come from backgrounds that are historically marginalised from higher education. Students recognise that the opportunity to study at university consistently leads to greater job security, a higher income and a level of social mobility later in life that those without a tertiary education do not possess. With this in mind, it should be beyond question that those most deserving of the opportunity to attend university are those currently distanced from the benefits that such an education provides. If we deny that indigenous, rural and disadvantaged background students ought to be the focus of any changes to universities, then we affirm a self-serving view of society that intentionally leaves others at the wayside in favour of profit or international rankings. As things stand, we at the SRC see students struggling to make ends meet every day. The cost of rent, food and textbooks all letting hampers the ability of many students to commit fully to studying without juggling several part-time jobs. Our caseworkers wrangle with Centrelink, provide emergency loans and advise students on how to stay just above the poverty line. As a rural student from Maylands, I have relied upon the assistance of others to pay for most of my education to date. I assure you that the decision to leave home and risk the financial pressure of the city is never taken lightly, and it is a decision that fewer people will make if fees are allowed to rise. When confronted with an uncertain cost for their degree and the prospect of an outsized HECS debt, the first students to elect not to attend university will be those currently most in need of our encouragement and support. If the university is serious about improving the enrolment of students from indigenous, rural and disadvantaged backgrounds, as it has so often claimed in the past, then opposition to deregulation is a given. To respond to the suggestion that a large scholarship fund for disadvantaged students could be established out of raised fees, any amount of money simply cannot compensate for abandoning the principle of equality opportunity for all students. Add to this the vice-chancellor’s ambition for a small number of students, and it is impossible to see any supposed scholarship scheme regaining the ground we would lose by pushing struggling students away from universities. All that remains is to remember that this is a debate in which one side is overwhelmingly supported. The opposition to fee deregulation is impossible to ignore. I hope one day to see my younger sisters attend university without fear of an unpaid debt. I hope that this opportunity remains for all regardless of background. And finally, I sincerely hope the university recognises that opposition to fee deregulation is...
...people!
Thank you very much, Max. Our next speaker, President of the SRC, Jennifer Light.
Good evening, members of the university community. I would like to thank you all and those responsible for today and for the opportunity to speak and put forward my case. But I have to ask, what is to come of today? There is no point proceeding if the administration has already made up its mind. So I urge you to listen with an open mind and to hear out the countless voices that make the community that is the University of Sydney. And that is what it is, a community. The University of Sydney is more than sandstone and a logo. It’s not a business, it’s a place for young and old to learn, to grow and to develop. All of us here have been touched in some way by this community, and we need to ensure that many more will continue to do so. The deregulation of student fees would strip the university of its greatest assets: diversity, access and fairness. If student fees are to skyrocket to what some economic models are showing, that medicine, dentistry and vet science will cost over $180,000, engineering and science will cost $115,000, and accounting and economics will cost $90,000, then this community would be smaller. It won’t be brighter, it won’t be better, it will be privileged but not elite. There is no feasible answer to overcome the barriers that deregulation would create. Talented students will think twice before applying to attend university, and those who do decide to come will be left with a lifetime of debt. Women, students from low socio-economic backgrounds and the prospective students of regional Australia will be hardest hit by the higher fees and higher interest rates on student loans. The university needs to celebrate its dynamism and diversity. The best universities are the ones in which the only prerequisite for every student is not your postcode, is your effort, not your postcode or your wealth. Deregulation will change the face of this university, and it would not be for the better. The university is meant to be a place to explore ideas, to push boundaries and discover obscure theories and subjects, because the pursuit of knowledge and learning should never be limited by the structures of commerce. When we were invited to speak, the proposal was, “How can deregulation align with the values of access, inclusion and equity?” And I say to this hall and this community that they do not. Education is a right, not a privilege, and everyone deserves the chance to have an education. I was elected President of the Student Representative Council to stand up for students, and I will not rest nor with this community in its fight to keep the University of Sydney fair. If it truly matters what we say here tonight, then I urge you to listen to the arguments and the sentiment in this room that deregulation will harm this community we are in, and I urge you to say no to any increase in the costs of our attending this wonderful university.
Thank you, Jennifer. Barry Catterall is a former Fellow of Seddon and Alumni Council President, he’s a patron of the 1850 Society. Barry.
Thank you. I’m here to raise the average age of the speaker panel. My purpose is not to support the proposed government changes, some of which even I would say are unsupportable, but instead to make the point that the current regulation and financing of our tertiary education institutions has not served us well, and that the case for major reform of tertiary education is overwhelming. It’s unfortunate that in any reform, and a fact of life, that it creates winners and losers, and of course the losers are obviously the most vocal. I’d like to highlight three aspects to support my case. In the early 80s, John Dawkins, the then Education Minister in the Hawke Government, homogenised tertiary education, making all institutions equal irrespective of whether they were research-intensive universities like ourselves or non-research, teaching-only institutions. All manner of perverse outcomes resulted with governments of all persuasions adding regulation upon regulation. Universities increased student intake to generate revenue, but the revenue generated didn’t meet the full costs of the commitments, and we came to rely on cross-subsidising teaching from other sources. The second area, which has already been referred to, is research, where the current research funding model means that the university must spend $1.20 for every raised, so the more successful we are at gaining research grants, the worse off we are financially, and again have to cross-subsidise our research activities. The last area is our increasing dependence on the revenue from overseas students to cover the underfunding of our teaching and research commitments. There are many factors, most beyond our control, which makes this dependence fraught with danger. As I said, we urgently need reform. The proposed government changes, a mix of good and bad, have not been well thought through. But I would contend that as bad as they are, they are not the worst-case scenario, which is the status quo. And maintaining the status quo with its restrictive regulations and the funding cuts of both the previous and the current government are the worst case, and it’s important to remember what governments do and do not have to put through Parliament to achieve. I’d like to conclude by saying that if we don’t have a viable option, then we have to be very, very wary of what we wish for. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Our next speaker is Margaret Kirby. Margaret.
Thank you. I put myself down for this because I’m a graduate of this university at undergraduate level, and I also work currently for the Sydney Uni Postgraduate Representative Association. And the point I wish to make for this is that we are already witnessing the impact of deregulation as this university is run at the moment, and I see a lot of that in the casework that I do in assisting individual postgraduate students. But before I move on to talking about that and giving some examples, I just wanted to address what I had also written in my description when I put in for this. Another point that I wish to raise is that not all graduates of this university intend to seek high-income earning jobs after they graduate. Many are committed to genuine not-for-profit sector work and/or to the government-funded sectors, the few of them that are still there, which are oftentimes, and employees in those organisations are oftentimes on very low wages. And this university actually has a proud tradition of its graduates, whether at postgraduate level or undergraduate level, going into the not-for-profit and government-funded sector. Now moving on to issues around what I’ve observed, I feel that the evidence is already there of the commodification and marketisation of degrees. And I see this in a number of ways. One example which I have with me is the weekend’s just gone Sydney Morning Herald, which had a postgraduate education insert as it does every year. And a professor of this university, in promoting postgraduate degrees in that faculty, said, “First, they,” meaning postgraduate degrees, “allow for a person with a bachelor degree to have another layer of specialisation that companies are looking for. This allows people to develop particular areas of expertise. Second, a postgraduate qualification can be a way of making a big career change. It’s increasingly the norm, and lots of organisations expect their people to be developing themselves in this way.” The issue that I have about this description of postgraduate education is it’s completely divorced from the reality of how people need to pull together some money to be able to get to do that postgraduate education. Now, some are going to be paying upfront fees, and some might be lucky to be working for an organisation that has a good enterprise agreement, where study comes, is in your enterprise agreement. But the reality is, a lot of the marketisation of postgraduate education in particular is pushing people to think about doing something because it’s going to get them a better life or a higher wage, and it takes away from the benefit that we all gain, both personally and societally, from people just studying what they’re interested in and having the time to properly get into the benefit that can be gained from thinking deeply about anything from science to philosophy to medical research and so on. And we need to allow people to be free of the worry of paying back debts so that they can properly enjoy their degrees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Margaret. Our second speaker has recently completed his PhD. Congratulations for that alone. Andrew, well done. Andrew Cooper.
Tonight we join in an ongoing conversation about who we are as Sydney University. Yes, we’re here to talk about higher education funding, but what I want to draw to our attention tonight is that the question of funding is premised upon the larger question of who we are. From a postgraduate research perspective, I suggest that we stand at a moment of Sydney University’s history where we, as a collective, are required to reimagine its identity. When you know who you are, you know what to spend your money on. You know whether new buildings are worth more than new faculty members, or whether a new office space is worth more than a library. When it comes to funding, it’s all a matter of priorities. Who then will decide what our priorities are? Will our priorities be set by a management team that’s not known for its collective decision-making? Or will it be set by our community as a whole, academics, students, alumni, involving a love for learning and a passion for our nation’s best interest? When Sydney recently dropped off the world’s top 100 universities, our Deputy Vice Chancellor of Research explained the situation in terms of the system’s new methodology. Her words, I think, express the desire of our current leadership to provide bureaucratic solutions to our problems, when these problems should cause us to join together in self-reflection and renew our collective commitment to our number-one game: teaching and research. Through my time as a postgraduate research student, I’ve become convinced that we have the people we need to be a world-class institution. What is holding us back is the lack of leadership that’s grounded in the research and teaching of this university. Visionary leadership makes decisions according to academic priorities. It works for collegiality with students and academics, meaning that leadership must be reimagined in terms of the teaching and research we do here. What we need to work for is another kind of decision-making that is able to maintain a focus on the transformative power of education. Not education as skills training for students who are seen as customers, but education that shapes the way students see the world. We need to work for transformative power of research, not research that’s quantified or quarantined behind paywalls, but research that’s valued for its public engagement. This view’s not new. It was held by our university’s founders and is held by many of the students and teachers we have today. As we consider higher education funding tonight, the question facing us is whether we will, together, reimagine the great academic institution that Sydney University has been, is and, I hope, will continue to be.
Thank you, Andrew. Our final speaker is both CEO of the Warren Centre for Advanced Engineering and an American international student completing a doctorate, Ashley Brinson. international student completing a Juris Doctor, Ashley Brinson.
Good evening. Despite my grey hair, I assure you that I am a student at this institution. My name is Ashley Brinson. I'm both an international student at the university and also a staff member at the Warren Centre over at the Faculty of Engineering. Armed with a bachelor's degree in engineering from Georgia Tech, a fine public institution, and from my hometown in Atlanta, I set off to embrace globalisation. From the US to the UK for four years, then back to the US, and then back to the UK, and then on to Shanghai, China for six years, I've been privileged to enjoy living in diverse locations and working alongside some incredibly talented international minds. It is with deep comparative understanding that I tell you that Sydney is a special place in the world, a truly cosmopolitan city that attracts the brightest minds and the best international talents. International students from China and from broader Asia have many options for study. The USA, Canada, Australia, and the UK each offer excellent education. The University of Sydney would be well advised to consider its overall value proposition for international students, especially students from East Asia and South Asia. I call on the university to examine critically how it contributes to the success of each student as an individual, those local Australian students and the international students who collectively represent $10 billion of tuition fees in Australia. Are students the customers of the service from the university, or are students the output product of a state institution serving the Sydney community? Customer or product? This is a critical distinction from a quality viewpoint, especially when the student is paying the fees. International students are different from local students in the range of options that they consider when making a $120,000 education investment. I pay $250 to each for my two-hour lectures, and every lecturer must pay back. The demanding student customer wants to feel the value proposition of the University of Sydney. The demanding customer student wants to be recognised as a son or daughter of the world who happens to be studying in Sydney at the moment. In the coming weeks, look outwardly, not inwardly. Examine what the rest of the world is doing. Embrace globalisation and build the value proposition for the success of each individual student. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening, it brings to the end of the scene, is... Can I start, please? By congratulating our speakers, it's never easy to speak in a venue like this, or on occasion like this, or in this hall. The eloquence and the passion was absolutely uplifting. I thought they were fantastic. We have a round of applause for our speakers, please. And also, thanks to the wonderful Caroline who is doing the timekeeping. Several people in their speeches have pondered what is the way forward. This is part of an ongoing process on behalf of the Senate, so if you turn your attention to the big screen now, that will summarise what's happening from beyond the sceneing, details of which will be made available to appropriate portals. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight. It's been an exciting and stimulating event to be part of. Once again, thank you very much to our speakers, the Chancellor and Vice Chancellor, thank you very much for having us here this evening. All travel home safely and enjoy your evening. Thank you very much. Just check their shoes where they are.
Do you leave your phone on the lectern?
That is not mine. One of the speakers has half-waisted it.